Will you please stand for the flag, Slope?
Chris.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Smith?
Play with me. Father, we ask that you keep close to us the winter months as the conditions may become dangerous while on the road. Those who do not have heat may stay warm, and those who have less than necessary food resources find a way to feed, especially the children. Thank you for all the many blessings you bestow on us each and every day. Christmas is the joyous time of year as we celebrate the birth of Jesus, family gatherings, and the blessings of giving. It's also the time of year that can be the saddest for those who have very little, have lost a family in some way, and who are alone. Please be with all those who need you during the holiday season. We would like to also ask you to be with our men and women of the armed forces as they serve to protect us with their sacrifices as being away from home with their families, friends, and country while in battle over the holidays. Please keep them safe and return them soon. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Roll call.
Dr. Ken Cave.
Here.
Mr. Newsom.
Here.
Mr. Riley.
Here.
This is Tru.
Chris.
This is Zimmer Sheehan.
Here.
Good. Welcome, everybody, to our Monday, December the 10th, 2018 school board meeting. First thing, we're going to get the recognition of Employees of the Month and Friends of Education awards. The first one will be the Certified Employee of the Month, Kara Holland. You out there?
She is.
All right. Come in.
Kara Holland, Instructional Coach at Lincoln Elementary, is deserving of the honor of Certified Employee of the Month. She's such an asset to Lincoln Elementary and our district. She is a lifelong learner and collaborator that exhibits a positive can-do attitude and professionalism every day. Kara is a master teacher that works tirelessly to provide support to the teachers in our building to ensure that they grow as professionals. Each week, instructional coaches at every elementary site turn in a log of their weekly coaching activities. Kara's log is always full and overflowing with various tasks that she has completed throughout the week, all aimed at supporting the teachers at her building. She facilitates building PLCs weekly for all grade levels. She is also a district PLC facilitator for the 4th grade teachers. Kara routinely models high-energy, high-engagement lessons in classrooms. She helps teachers write lesson plans. She participates in instructional rounds and observations, trains teachers, TAs, and volunteers, and helps teachers acquire needed resources. Kara is always willing to help in any capacity and is a vital member of the leadership team at Lincoln. Kara is a highly motivated educator that others respect and enjoy working alongside her, and it is because of these reasons and many more that Kara deserves this recognition of Certified Employee of the Month, and Lincoln would not be where they are without you.
Congratulations, Kara. The next one's going to be our Support Employee of the Month, Billy Haley, Teacher Assistant at Roosevelt Elementary.
Billy Haley is the epitome of a dedicated and loyal Ponca City Wildcat employee. For the last nine years, in rain, sleet, or snow, he's never been late to work. From the moment he walks in the building, he brings a positive attitude along with the willingness to take on any role for the team to make Roosevelt the best it can be for children. He arrives earlier than most so he can prepare for maybe his largest responsibility of the day, our morning and afternoon crossing garden. Mr. Haley takes on many roles throughout our school day and is always an active participant in school events. You may find him conducting an interview with a student on a book from our 70 Best Novels list, guiding a small group for RTI, playing kickball at recess, or providing his infamous chocolate chip cookies for the faculty events. He recently amazed and delighted a group of 3rd graders when he dislodged a ball that they had gotten stuck in top of a tree with a perfectly aimed toss of a football. Mr. Haley is a big Oklahoma State fan, and just like a lion in the alma mater, he is loyal and true to the Roosevelt family. Thank you for all you do, Billy.
Thank you. Next will be the Friends of Education. Lisa Isley?
She made it just in time.
Ooh, just in time.
Good time.
Volunteer at Woodlands.
Yeah, she just started.
I wish it wasn't that one.
I would've waited.
Woodlands Elementary School is thrilled for Lisa Isley to be recognized as the Friend of Education for December 2018. Without question, Mrs. Isley certainly deserves this award. Lisa serves the Woodlands family in many ways. She assists us with funding by helping to secure volunteer grants from local companies for time that Woodlands friends and family give to the school. She is a bargain hunter and frequently shows up with goodies for the AR store or for teachers to use as prizes. She has even been known to provide items and equipment for classrooms at times when other funding was not available. When the school needed china for lunch with the principal that students can earn, she showed up with a set of china she had found at a bargain. Mrs. Isley is active on the Woodlands PTA. For many years, she has volunteered with various aspects of Woodlands' annual Family Fun Night. This year, she was in charge of the silent auction. She and her team led the charge to secure items for the auction and staffed the auction on the night of the event. Mrs. Isley is also one of Woodlands' substitutes. In addition to planned times, she often answers the call to substitute at the last minute when teachers have last-minute absences. We always know classes are in good hands when she is in there. To quote one of our teachers, "She is a lifeline." Thank you, Mrs. Isley, for being part of the Woodlands family. You make a difference. We are very proud to recognize you as the December 2018 Friend of Education for Ponca City Public Schools.
Good. Congratulations. Think we're going to have pictures for those three?
Pictures out in the hallway.
Out in the hall, whenever you leave.
Well deserved. Thank you.
Thank you all for coming.
Great job. Fabulous employees and volunteers.
Next item will be 2.2 Wildcat Academy. Teen Pep? Come up.
We brought a couple of students tonight, and they're going to talk to you just a little bit about Wildcat Academy and express their appreciation for your support. This is Tyson Sinek.
Sinek.
Sorry. I didn't know that after four years.
I've been going to Wildcat since I was a freshman, and I am a senior now, and everything I love about Wildcat is just awesome. You know, I couldn't really function at the high school because of the speed at which everything was happening, and I went to Wildcat, and all that changed. I was always a D-making student, and now I'm Bs and As.
Awesome.
And all thanks to Wildcat and all the staff there, too.
Good deal.
Ever since I've been going to Wildcat, my life has gotten better a lot. I was failing like three classes last year, and I just started going this year, and I'm now passing all my classes with As and Bs. The teachers help with a lot, whether it's getting lipstick out of my hoodie or giving me Tic Tacs so I'll do my work. It's just, it's a good environment because it's smaller and you get to do everything at your own pace, which helps a lot. So I just really like being at Wildcat because it's so much easier on me and all the students there.
Hi, I'm Viviana. I love Wildcat. I started going in the middle of my sophomore year. I was, I had, I was not going to lie, I had really bad depression. I didn't talk to anybody. I just felt alone in the high school, so when I came to Wildcat, I felt like I was surrounded by people that felt the same way, and that it just gave me a better environment to work in, and it just, they make me feel loved. They make me feel wanted, and I know they want me to thrive in my life. I know they want me to do the best I can, and I know they check on me, and they always make sure I'm okay, and that's why I appreciate Wildcat.
Awesome. Ms. Reader, why don't you introduce your staff to the board?
This is Mr. Cartley. He is our history teacher, and this is Ms. McCollum. She teaches English. This is Coach Swain. He does our CPR training and safety ed, and he's in charge of the food pantry and anything else that we can come up with, he is the man. And this is Coach Kimbrel. He's our math teacher, and he does a lot of extra stuff, too. Everybody does. Everybody pitches in and helps, and it's just a great place to be, you know, guys.
You all are seniors?
I am a junior.
Junior. Okay. Good. Well, I'm glad you're working out for you. Thanks for coming to this.
Carla, how many students you have now?
We have 115.
I think they have a waiting list.
Isn't that about as high as you've been for a while?
They do have a waiting list. Kids want to be there. Thanks for coming, guys. You did a good job.
Did a good job.
Every day we get phone calls.
So that's your max?
Yeah.
Space-wise?
And I have, we have people everywhere. In the hallways, we have them everywhere.
And you have, how long's your waiting list?
I have probably 15 on the waiting list right now.
Good. Good job.
They do an amazing job.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Good job, students.
Thanks, guys.
That's what we like to hear.
Yeah.
Kids that still are making it work. We didn't have anybody sign up for public comments from the public, so we're going to go on to 4. Building and Assessment Reviews. Oh, where are we at? Oh, I'm sorry. 3.2. Vote to recess, regular board meeting, and call a public hearing for the tribal leaders and Native American parents to discuss and participate of the Native American students in educational programs. Comment on educational programs and review Section 2.5 of the Board Policy of Native American Community Relations. Need a vote to go into regular?
I'll make a motion.
Motion to recess? Okay. Second?
Second.
On the paper, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, we'll be in recess. Come up, sir. Yeah.
We moved it out so we could see.
Good to see everybody again. I'm glad we made it through the snowstorm this past weekend.
Word like they are.
Touching gold there for a while. Thank you for coming. Yeah, okay. Well, Impact Aid, that's what I'm here to talk about tonight. Just a brief background, it provides dollars to help offset taxes that we don't collect from properties in Ponca City where our students reside. Currently, we list low-rent housing properties and also those that are on restricted Indian land in White Eagle and other areas around the county. And since we count Indian land in our headcount for Impact Aid, we have to have IPPs, Indian policies and procedures in place, which is Policy 2.5 in the book, policy book, and we have to review those every year. And we've been doing that for quite a while now, and last year, we even had to rewrite the policies, actually, and you guys approved those last December. But we have to have a hearing each year to give the opportunity to tribal leaders and parents or any other interested parties for their input into what we do with the Native American students, how they participate in programs, and just any question they may have about what we're doing, and address those and give them that opportunity to bring those forward. So, and with the ESSA, you know, a couple of years ago, they put another component in there for all the title programs, we have to have tribal consultation, so we've been doing that the past two falls. We have to look at the IPPs way before we come here now. And so in October, the Parent Committee for Title VI, we reviewed the IPPs, they looked at them, and then I took their comments. They didn't really have any, they were good with it. Took that to the tribe and gave them a chance to respond and read them, and then they were good with it. And then I think last month, we all went out there as a district to meet with the Business Committee and give them an opportunity to bring it up again then. And so right now, there's no changes to the IPPs on their part, so just a matter of reviewing them, which we're going to do tonight. So I brought a couple of slides that corresponds with the printouts. Some I got to do here. Oh, good. Good from here. Thanks. Well, maybe I'm not. This looks different than mine. How do you start it?
Go to slideshow.
Okay. This is just a list of the student participation, Native American, you know, different extracurricular activities. You've seen this before. I bring this every year. This is just for this school year. And the bottom there, I was looking at the percentage of kids in 9th through 10th grades, and when I was listening to Carla speak, when you asked her how many kids she had, I forgot to count those kids in that 1,249. That's why that percentage is so high, you know, 24%. It should be, if I put that 115 into that 1,249, it should bring that number closer to the 18.5 participation rate. I didn't put the math on it yet, because there's never been that much of a disparity. It's always been pretty close. That participation rate has always kind of mirrored what the population rate is, student population rate. But that's for this year. I'll let you look at it. It's pretty much, we have someone in almost everything that they offer at the high school, and also added gifted and talented, and that's district-wide. We have 105 students in the district who are considered gifted and talented. And I added, just for grins, the past two years before that, so you can kind of see, it's kind of hard to read, but the one on your paper probably easier to read. It's just a trend, you know, you look at football, it's 28, 26, and 25. It's pretty constant. Wrestling has gone down. I remember I came in here about four or five years ago, and at that time, we had 50% participation in wrestling. I think we had 25 out of 50 kids were Native American descent, and now it's down to 6. So I don't really know what's going on there, but we do have 6. And then you can just work your way down like that. And where there's no data at all, we just didn't have anybody there, but I went ahead and put the category there. And this is the student count. We're in the process right now of conducting the count, and right now, 182 is the preliminary count. There's a couple of properties I'll have to get verification from, from Pawnee. They look at our properties and make sure they're restricted and, you know, no taxes collected on those properties, and they sign off on that as well. So that's the count right now, and I don't know what that translates into dollars, but if you look at FY 2019, we had 175 kids, and so far, we've received $37,099. And that figure will go up because usually the payments come, you know, like three payments over three years, sometimes four payments. The ones with asterisk, those are already final, those were final amounts, and you can see the higher the number, you know, in most cases, the amount is a little better. It's a formula that they use. It's underfunded, has been for a while. We have a prorated amount that we get, it's about 5% of what we actually should be getting, between 5% and 6%, but they can't even fund that. So now we get like, it's going to be like, in the future, probably 80% to 90% of that prorated amount. They don't know. It goes from year to year depending on the appropriations in Congress. But this is where we are, and this is where we've been in these years listed. And if there's any questions, I'll, from the audience or from you guys, I'll answer them.
Does that money just go into the general account, or do you all have special programs you spend with that, those dollars?
It goes into the general fund, and I, it's spent on various items. It could be electricity, it could be buses, or whatever. It goes in general fund. It's not earmarked for anything special for Native Americans.
But you have a budget amount then you can spend out of it?
No, I don't.
Oh, you don't?
No. We have Title VI program, which is Indian education, and that's what I use for my program or for Title VI, and it's a healthy budget this year. It's a little over $207,000 for this school year.
Anything else done? Thank you.
All right. Appreciate it. We'll watch the concert. Thank you.
Yes, 7 o'clock. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to vote and return to regular session. Do we have a motion?
I move to return to regular session.
Second. Call the paper, aye?
Aye.
Aye. All right, let's go to 4. Now Building Assessment Reviews.
Yes. Veronda.
Yes, Veronda.
You can be first.
How are you?
Oh, great. What about you?
We're great. Beautiful day.
It was a beautiful day, and I agree. I'm glad we didn't have to fight through snow again or...
Yes.
Or whatever. Yep. Get this all taken care of. Brett told me I fidgeted, and I sat there and watched him shake his leg for the last 15 minutes. All right, I have a very quick question. How many of you feel like most days you need a little bit more time, or you wish that you could lose that cell phone for a couple of hours or a couple of days, or that computer? Do you feel that?
Every day.
We feel that, every day, and I think as a society, we feel that. You know, I was just trying to, everyone that seemed like I talked to was talking about that at one point, and then low and behold, Barbara and Terry, they bring in Dr. Riffle, right?
Dr. Riffle.
Who, oh, okay. Amy, you get all the credit. But anyway, Dr. Riffle talked about how kids are getting 63% less face time today than they did in '53, and she said that conservatively. I would bet it's more like 80-plus. And so what she really was linking that lack of face time to were behaviors. And so, you know, you leave there thinking, okay, so how do we help our kids? How do we continue to help our kids? Then we read an article from, I have to look at her name, I'm never quite, actually, a whole book, by Dr. Victoria Dunkel, and she's talking about all the issues she sees in children, and how many of them are technology tied, and she has a whole reprogramming of students. So I say all that to, you know, then I put into play what I know from Eric Jensen about how much time it takes to process information, for kids to truly process the information, and how they've got to have that time. Often, it's three to five minutes for 15 minutes of teaching time, because that's just how the brain works. The reason I bring this up is because last year, I finished with the Rocks of Roosevelt, and I finished with the 21st Century Skills. But we, at all of the schools, and I'm sure that they can tell you the same at Trout, it goes on at Roosevelt, and every other school, we constantly battling that, how much teaching time, how much technology, how do we use the best of our time and still get results from our students? So I'm going to go through this. I'm going to start with the Rocks of Roosevelt. I can guarantee you one thing. Every day, we base anything we look at on those rocks. Are we building students who are problem solvers? Do they love to read and the learning adventure? In other words, can we continue to keep them wanting to come to school every day through all that we're trying to teach them physically, emotionally, and intellectually capable, and guided by teachers who fan the flames of students' dreams? You know, when Dr. Riffle said that, I'm thinking, okay, so now I've got to look 350 kids in the face every day to give them more face time. So we try to work to make sure students know they're important. Then you throw in the 21st Century Survival Skills that Tony Wagner talked about in his book, The Global Achievement, and I don't know, Terry, if you picked out the book Nim's Island, but that was a great, do you guys read The One Book, One District? Okay, we loved Nim's Island for multiple reasons. We're always trying to take advantage of our time and tie it to something academic, whether it's vocabulary or whether it's some of these skills. So Nim's Island was great. We got out maps, we talked about all kinds of things, but you could go through and identify in a 21st Century skill multiple things in that book that Nim did, or her father did, or Alex, the writer, and it talked about that critical thinking, creative thinking, and problem solving constantly. They were solving issues on how to survive on that island or to deal with the storm. They collaborated across networks and, you know, with the author to help her books be better and more real. Agility and adaptability, you know, all the time. Everybody in the story was having to adapt to the conditions. They took initiative to do things, to build bonds, to be an explorer, and if you didn't effectively communicate, that was a problem when you're stuck out on an island. So you better make sure that you can effectively communicate, or you miscommunicate, like you think Alex is a guy and you think Nim is some kid not living on an island, but just living, you know, in the suburban neighborhood with dogs as pets. But accessing and analyzing information, they had to know about the weather and their imagination. I could go on and on and on about all the connections that we were able to make with the book. So it was a great choice, but it, once again, it goes back to that, trying to value our time and trying to make sure that we're teaching something, no matter what it is we're talking about. We're trying to tie that to curriculum and to things that get results for children. So let's start looking at the numbers, and what does that look like? Here's our star, early literacy, kindergarten. We've gone up as we, you know, from the beginning, the first, from September to December, but we know we can't let up right there. 86% of our students are at the 50 percentile or higher, but you know, some of those are just barely over the bump, so we have to keep working. We have to figure out ways to continue to build on that. First grade, they jumped up to 89% in October. In December, it dropped a little bit, but the, you know, the complexity of their reading grows, and so it is a time. But we just continue to push on constantly, once again, I want to say, constantly looking at the numbers and reiterating, re-changing our groups, changing what's happening to try to continue to build with those students. We move on to star reading, and the graph shows the students at 50th percentile or higher. Second grade started out about half our students, gradually went up, and went up a pretty good number, but we still have, if you look at it, 25% of our students not there yet. You move on down to 3rd grade, under 50%. The last time, we eased up over half our students. You get into 4th grade, and you have 45, drop down to 42. They have not tested in December. 5th grade is the same. They have not tested. They were at 38, jumped up to 47, and we're looking for some growth spurts. But I can tell you, when we get those numbers, then we sit down and we look at it and try to figure out, who can we help? Are there students we need to identify differently? But constantly looking at trying to continue to improve those. We get to math, same thing. Looks great in 2nd grade. We're moving up. 3rd grade made a nice gain for being halfway through the year. 4th grade just stayed pretty steady, and 5th grade, right there at the halfway, 50%. The greatest thing that we probably fight right now in 4th and 5th grade are 59 kids and two teachers. That's a lot of bodies, and especially when you're sitting right there, just, you know, 4th grade's just barely over 50%, and 5th grade is right at 50%. But the teachers are working hard, we're utilizing some outside resources, just constantly trying to figure out how we can do it better. Star reading and math, students who did not show growth from September to December. When we look at this, our goal is always to help students grow. We can't guarantee that we can always get them exactly where we would like to have them, but we can guarantee most of the time that they grow. So two out of, only two out of 52 students, which is still too many, but didn't show growth in math, four out of 52. 3rd grade, two out of 63 in reading, but that number, that 17 out of 64, really bothers us in the math. So we're trying to look at that, we're checking our math reviews, we're making sure we're doing them by really trying to utilize what standards they are sufficient on before we move on. 4th grade, 10 of 29 in reading, didn't progress, and 10 of 29 in math. Now, that's only half of the grade. One grade hasn't because of some personal circumstances. They haven't star-tested yet in December, but even that, that's a third of the class. But even that, that's a third of the class. You know, so we're really looking for our partnership with our resource in special education, our RTI, and our small groups. Fifth grade has not completed their testing. They're going to get every minute out of every day, and so, they start testing tomorrow for their STAR. Who are the students? Who are the students that we constantly are looking at? You have the top high students that flatline, the high students that decline. You know, we really push, that we want our top students to grow just as much as we want our bottom students. And it's harder, a lot of times, to push those top students than it is the bottom students. Then, you have our low students that decline, and then the very low students who flatline. And a lot of times, that's time for us to look at some further intervention. What could contributing factors be? Rigor of instruction. You know, one thing that Ponca City does great is they constantly keep us up to snuff, I'm going to say, in professional development, and always have us looking at instructions. So, we constantly look at that. We look at students with lack of effort. Why? High impact, life stressors, emotional trauma, undiagnosed learning problems, all those things that every time we read an article or bring a speaker in, they refer to. So, how do we take on the challenge? A lot of this, I've already gone through, but once again, loving and inspiring every rough rider every day. From a variety of things that, you know, are fun. We constantly... Our operating system is Great Expectations. And when we look at those students and the numbers, we're referring students for testing and family support services, counseling, things that... Ways they can, if they need those services, like food, or electricity help, or whatever it may be, trying to help them make those connections. Continuing and reviewing data and adjusting instruction accordingly. Our fifth grade leadership structure has been very successful. Our focused RTI, language and math enrichment, interactive small groups and rotations. And making engagement a priority, ALT. If students aren't engaged, then it doesn't really matter what the teacher does. We utilize that through Kagan structures, thinking maps, problem-solving varieties, interactive read-alouds, and MERP has been a focus. I know that's our focus this year with Mrs. Errett, or my personal focus with Mrs. Errett. On going professional development, we've got the best of anywhere I've ever been here in Ponca City. But at our school in particular, we're continuing to look at literacy-first consultant, Great Expectations mentor, instructional rounds, principal and instructional coach continually modeling of best practice. We try to model in faculty meetings, in opening, whatever it is, we try to model good instruction practices. Questions?
Class sizes. Talk about your class sizes by grade.
Fifth grade is fifty-nine. Twenty-nine, two, with two teachers. Same thing in fourth grade. Then, when you get on down, third grade, we have three groups. I think they're twenty-two, twenty-three. I'm not exactly sure on that. You know, that changes often. You back on down to second grade, seventeen and eighteen, right in that area. First grade, I believe, is twenty-four or five. And kindergarten are twenty-four or five.
Per class.
Is that why your lower grades appear to be a little higher on your results, do you think?
Very well, it could be, but it's hard to say. It definitely has an effect in those really large classes in fourth and fifth grade. You know, the research will say, oh, well, if they're a great teacher, they can... You know, it doesn't matter. It does, but you burn them out very... I mean, a great teacher can make a difference, but it burns them out very, very quickly. And yes, it does. It does have an effect.
That was my next question. Teacher experience. Do you have veteran teachers?
Veteran teachers in fifth grade, second-year teachers in fourth grade. Very good second-year teachers in fourth grade. Third grade, we mixed a veteran this year with two second-year teachers. Well, Ms. Kelly would be a third-year teacher and a second-year teacher. We feel like that's been a positive, to bring some early childhood experience with Ms. Williams up to third grade to see if we could improve, like, you know, if there was anything we needed to do different in small groups, those type of intervention systems. Anything else?
We had very little turnover this year.
Yes. We had a lot last year.
We do, the most in the district.
Thank you very much.
Rhonda, thank you.
I tell you what, I'm trying to figure out how to hold all this stuff tonight. Here we go. Okay. For some reason, I think my voice can be heard, I think. Can I see that down there before it falls over? Thank you. Oh. Let's see if this one's mine. There we go. Well, first of all, that's quite an act to follow up. Can I just say ditto, and we'll be there? Okay? Good ideas. Thank you for bringing us in and letting us talk about what's going on in our buildings. I've been around long enough to see that we've done this different ways. We used to do it with a dinner that nobody could eat because we were too nervous to talk. So, thank you for letting us come and get our thoughts in order before we prepare for this. Here we go. Is this the one that's working? Nope. Which one did you use, Rhonda? This one? Okay.
It's the round one. It's this one right here.
Think we can go? There we go. I have to put a lot of pictures in our presentation because data is about numbers, but what we do is about kids. So, we have this motto that we've used for several years, "Think, Believe, Move Mountains." I tried to get rid of that last year and introduce something new, and the kids were like, no, this is what we believe in. So, that's what our presentation's about today. We'll start off with our state scores from last spring. Last... As I was preparing this, I noticed that last year, I was here in March. And I need to be honest with you. I walked out of here, and I looked all of you in the face, and I said, I guarantee I'll have better scores next year, because I thought we had the dream team. And we did. We had a group of students who have produced higher scores than anyone since I'd been at Trout. And we were pretty excited about that. In fact, when I came in March, we were showing you students... We had fourteen of our kids that were scoring above the seventy-fifth percentile. And that was on STAR test. So, we kind of had a pretty good idea what we were planning on having. We had twenty-one of those fifth graders who had scored advanced in the year before. So, we were feeling pretty confident. As you know, just when you put all your eggs in one basket, that basket might roll down the hill. We managed to win one battle down at the State Department, but I think another battle took place here with the competition of our test scores, and they didn't show what we had hoped for. The dream team showed up, they did a great job, but they had been out of their routines for three weeks. And so, we played basketball with one hand tied behind our backs. So, when those test scores came out, we were disappointed. I'm standing before you in a different world than I thought I would be from last year. So, we have broken down our test scores into advanced, proficient, limited knowledge, and unsatisfactory. This is reading, I'm sorry. Fifth grade at twenty-eight percent, fourth grade at forty percent, third grade at thirty-five percent. Once again, we kind of felt like the rules of the game had changed. However, those are the cards we're dealt, and so, we have been building all year from these test scores. One of the things that we do is to build our data wall every August, and we work with this data wall every other week, and sometimes every week. So, we are color coordinated, excuse me. I know several of the principals have talked to you about STAR data and looking at the seventy-six... Excuse me, the sixty-fifth percentile and on up. At Trout, we've always split it into the seventy-fifth percentile, and we stayed with that. That's what we started out with, and I don't think it ever hurts to have those high expectations. So, you will see that breakdown that goes along with our test data. Kindergarten and first grade STAR data is a little skewed because they will start out in early literacy, and then we transfer them over to the STAR, to the regular STAR test. So, that's a comparison of tests that I don't like to do, but it gives us an idea of where we started from. What I do is, on this table, we break it down. The number on top, if you'll look at second grade, we started out with nine students scoring in the seventy-fifth percentile or above. Following that on down, the eight students. So, basically, we started with seventeen students above the fiftieth percentile. And the number in parentheses are the number of students currently that are scoring above the fiftieth percentile. So, we grew from seventeen on up to thirty. And these scores are hot off the presses from last Friday afternoon. Going on down, we had twelve students who were below the fiftieth percentile in August, and currently, we only have four... Excuse me, only have five at that point. You can go on across. Third grade had eighteen in August. We're up to twenty-eight at this point, and growing. As I said, I was comparing this to our February data from last year, and I'm pleased to say, we're ahead of where we were two months earlier last year. So, two months later, excuse me. Third grade, we have twenty-four students that were performing above the fiftieth percentile. That has grown to thirty. And then, there's five lurking right below that fiftieth percentile in scoring forty-eight and forty-nine percent. So, happy to see those numbers going up. Fifth grade as well. Last year, I came and talked to you about interventions and what we were doing with interventions, and how those are taking effect. I got to thinking, you know what? If we do our job and we work hard at building those strategies, then we won't need to talk about interventions. So, tonight, one of the things that we're looking at at Trout is going back to our foundation. Marizano is a familiar name in our district. We take all of these straight off of his instructional strategies, what yields high... yields from those. We also take these straight off of our teacher evaluation. So, I've listed the high-yield instructional strategies on the left. On the right is what the percentile gains that data shows us from research. We went in and ranked what we are really good at, and that's what the three asterisks are out there beside. We are very good at reinforcing effort and providing recognition. I think we do a fabulous job of setting objectives and providing feedback. Two of the areas that we're really wanting to get better at is summarizing and note-taking, and then identifying similarities and differences, which is the highest percentile gain. It's also the highest strategy that is utilized in fifth grade, but not so much the younger grades. So, we are working to remedy that. Some of the ways that we're working on summarizing and note-taking, this is where I wanted you to see student work. Our fifth graders have been working on a project with the Thirteen Original Colonies. They have integrated math, social studies... Excuse me, reading and social studies in, and have just produced some wonderful posters. You need to understand where they started from on research, using those Chromebooks that we love, developing posters. And last Friday, they did presentations to the fourth graders. They had built their own PowerPoints. And so, that sounds easy, but it's not always easy using those Twenty-First Centuries... Twenty-First Century Skills when students are limited on what they can do on the computer if it's not game mode. Reinforcing effort and providing feedback. Over on the left-hand side, you see an example of a student working on their AR goals. So, they've broken that down. They know exactly how many points they need for each quadrant of a nine weeks. We're doing some celebrating over on the right-hand side. Homework and practice, it looks a lot different than when we were in school. They are utilizing those Chromebooks in fourth and fifth grade probably fifty percent of the time. So, we appreciate that. Cooperative learning. No, we did not have a flu outbreak at Trout. Over on the left-hand side, we have a very energetic third-grade teacher that came in to us, and she was having them dissect figurative language. She had the gloves out, the masks out, and they were working in groups. Over on the right-hand side, we have fifth-grade boys that are engaged in a project, as I said earlier, the Thirteen Colonies. Cooperative learning is big at Trout. We have an instructional coach that loves to teach Kagan strategies. We utilize Kagan strategies as much as we can in our faculty meetings so that we are modeling that for the teachers to take back to their classrooms. A lot of modeling takes place with Kagan structures. Setting objectives and providing feedback. On the left-hand side, we have an art teacher that travels between two buildings. She has a whole wall that shows her target goals, her objectives. The lady is organized. When I grow up, I'm going to be like Ms. Noggle. That's kind of a representation of what they're doing in art for this month. Over on the right-hand side, we've got students who are posting their results as far as how they're doing on their AR points. We believe strongly that a student that is meeting those AR goals is a successful reader. Questioning cues and advanced organizers, we are working hard to build that. Over on the left-hand side, I came to one of these presentations last year, and I stole the idea straight from Woodlands. That's the Cube Advanced Organizer that we're using in math class. We love it. The organizer that we use in reading is oftentimes Unravel, brought in by Larry Bell a few years ago. Over on the right-hand side, those are brochures in case you would like to come to Oklahoma and see all the wonderful traits that we have here in Oklahoma. We know that involved parents make learning easier for their students. We know that involved parents make teaching easier for our teachers. Over on the left-hand side, we've been doing a reading night. The kids get to dress up in their Halloween costumes and come for activities in the classroom. And then, we go down to the gym and play bingo for books. That's been very popular. I don't know what the attraction was on the right-hand side, but certainly has everybody's attention. And then, we have our teachers that are presenting information to our parents so they know what the expectations are and how to help their students along the learning path. Rhonda brought up a good point. We love Nim's Island as well for the exact same reasons. Talk about a dynamic girl that put problem solving into effect. We had a hundred and seventy-nine families participate in this and just had all kinds of fun with it. More so, though, I think we developed a lot of summarizing skills because this was a kid-friendly book, and parents loved it, had lots of positive comments. Going on to math, I'm back to STAR. Once again, we're still using those same strategies. Our students are doing very good in math. Historically, we are higher in math than we are in reading, and we produce those higher math scores every year. So, we are looking at individual kids and how they're doing and how they're moving up. As Rhonda said, growth is what we're about. Any questions on that? I hate to read through the numbers for you. This shows our math scores from last April with our fifth graders, our fourth graders, and our third graders. Once again, we were expecting something much different because those fifth-grade hotshots were hot in math. Didn't post the numbers that we were expecting. Third grade is always kind of a cross-your-fingers, say a lot of prayers, and hope for the very best because that's the first time that they will be taking the test. They did great in third-grade math. We are very proud of those scores. So, I'm anxious to see what those third graders will show us this year in fourth grade. The testing will be a little bit different. This year, fourth and fifth graders will be taking the test on the computer. So, that gives us a new challenge. And the kids are already working hard on their writing skills through Google Classroom and doing lots of projects in that. Before I finish up, I was going to make my seven minutes up here. This was our Wildcat night we had the other night. Look closely, I think you guys will notice the Santa Claus in that. So, this is just a representation of how much fun we can have outside of school with our kids in the extracurricular activities, where you're trying to build that up. That's Doyle as Santa Claus. So, just in case some of you missed that. I don't know how you did, but there's Doyle as Santa Claus. I think he found his calling. We are working very hard to not just give kids data, to not just give kids test prep. We're working hard to give them experiences. And so, we've started this board, and my hope is to keep changing it as often as possible and just fill it up. We have a lot of pictures with parents being in the building, whether it's for our reading nights, our math nights, or coming in and helping volunteer, also doing some of the activities with us. So, we invite you to stop by for a visit. Our doors are always open, and we'd like to show you around and let you see hands-on what kids are doing at Trout. Any questions?
Same as with Rhonda.
Okay, let's see. First question?
Class size and teacher experience.
Class size. We have kindergarteners running out our ears.
Kindergarten is your issue.
Yes, yes. We started in August, I believe, at the very start... Teri, correct me if I'm wrong. We had to move twelve kindergarteners to other schools when we first started.
Before we started? Before.
That was the first round. And since then, we've had to, as new kindergarteners have come in, we have them over at Woodlands Union... Union, and a few at Liberty. So, that has been our highest challenge this year. You know, over the years, we start out with large class sizes in kindergarten, first grade, second grade. Then we see a lot of our parents buy houses somewhere else. I think we have our large numbers in those lower grades because we have a lot of apartment complexes. We have a lot of trailer parks in ours, and I think as those parents get a little bit older and save up some money, then they go purchase homes in other areas. Right now, our fifth grade is pretty low, and pretty low means twenty-two in a class. But that's the lowest that we've seen in quite a while. So, but I didn't want to tell that in public, did I?
No, we know. How many?
There we go.
Teacher experience.
Teacher experience. We are going along the same pathway I think that Rhonda's going along. We try to pair up an experienced person in that grade with, I'm being careful here, I do not want to say younger person, but a less experienced teacher.
With a rookie.
With a rookie, there you go. So, we've got that going on in fifth grade. We have a teacher with thirty, over thirty-three years of experience, and she's paired up with a teacher who has three years of experience. Fourth grade, pretty much the same years of experience, just not in fourth grade together. Third grade, we have, once again, a teacher with over thirty years of experience paired up with a third-year teacher. Second grade, very experienced with a younger, less experienced teacher. They make a good dynamic duo. Our first grade teachers have both been teaching for a while. We have a new first grade teacher that came in with twenty-one years of experience, however, not too many years in first grade. She's been a kindergarten teacher. And then, our kindergarten teachers are, I want to say, eight to ten years of experience. We've got good people. Come over and visit us. Any other questions? Thanks for having us.
Thank you. Thank you, Carla. Good job.
Thank you.
We have great instructional leaders in our district. Are you up next? Would you like the microphone back?
Oh, sorry. There you go. Thank you, ladies. Great, great job.
Good job, though.
Thank you.
Drop out report.
Okay.
Thank you. Sorry.
This is a very quick, quick one pager, if I can get it open. This year, you can see, I've done a comparison from 2014 to 2018. This year, we had seven students listed as dropouts at Pohai, seven at our alternative programs, which are Wildcat, Team Pep, and our SHARE program at Pioneer Technology. We had no dropouts at East and one at West, and the one dropout at West, she moved, and we don't have a record. So, she could have, probably she moved out of state, otherwise we would have had record of that on the way if she were in Oklahoma. So, the student can leave us, and we don't have any information for where that student left us. And so, then we are required to list them as a dropout. So, we have fifteen dropouts with about twenty-five hundred secondary students, so that is a pretty good, it's a zero-point-nine percentage. So, I believe all of our programs, and we have seen lots of things happen at the high school where they're tracking students better. We have Wildcat Academy, who is graduating large numbers each year. So, we're being able to pull in those students that have left us, and we're bringing them back in to graduate those students. So, you know, our people at high school, Wildcat Academy, SHARE program, Team Pep, are doing their jobs. So, they're effective in bringing those kids back and graduating those students. Any questions?
How do our rates compare to state?
I don't know exactly what the state is. We don't have that, I don't have that number, but we are significantly below what we were last year, and we were below the state average last year. So, and we are, you know, when you look at, of course, we just finished the dropout report, so that's, we don't have the state.
So, we're twice as high this year as we were last year, though.
We were, and the issue there was, they changed our reporting. Every, we used to do quarterly dropout reports, so every quarter, I had to do a dropout report based on students that had left within that quarter. Last year, they changed that to a year. So, some of that, that reporting was different last year. So, we are back on a, one time a year, we don't longer do a quarterly report for dropout. So, our numbers should, I mean, I would hope that they are lower next year, but that is the reason that we had significantly fewer last year because they changed the reporting window for us.
Report is from January to December?
It is from October one to September thirty. So, it's, yes.
Oh, okay.
They give us an opportunity to bring those kids back in August and September before we have to count them as, or to locate those students before we have to count them as a dropout. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, Barbara.
Next item is consent agenda. I'd like to have a motion to approve the consent.
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion from Robin, a second from Dr. Kincaid. Any other discussions? If none, roll call, please.
Mrs. Truitt.
Aye.
Mrs. Zimmershi.
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid.
Aye.
Mr. Newsom.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Next item will be six-point-one, consider to take action on the following district's financial reports. Had a good meeting. Robin was quiet.
Was he?
He was.
Were you happy?
Happy.
He's happy for some reason. I don't know what the deal was, but it was a good meeting. No, it really went well, and we had some good reports, and I'd like a motion to approve it.
I'll make a motion to approve the...
Six-point-one?
Yep.
Second.
Motion from Judy, a second from Robin on six-point-one. Roll call.
Mrs. Zimmershi.
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid.
Aye.
Mr. Newsom.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Truitt.
Aye.
Thank you. Next item will be six-point-two, consider to take action on the change order number two for the Roseville Elementary School parking lot expansion. See, we got a little credit for that, so we did good. Talked about that before. Like to have a motion to approve six-point-two.
I'll motion.
I second.
I like...
Motion by Nancy and second by Doc to approve. Any other discussion? If none, roll call.
Dr. Kincaid.
Aye.
Mr. Newsom.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Truitt.
Aye.
Mrs. Zimmershi.
Aye.
Motion passed. Thank you. Next item is six-point-three. Consider to take action on the following contract agreements. A is agreement with Pinnacle for the eighteen maintenance renewal. That's on our E-rate, some of our switching gear stuff, if I remember right. Next item is B, agreement with Pinnacle for the 2018 reckless maintenance renewal. This is on just the wireless part, correct? C is agreement with Alice Training Institute for e-learning support and maintenance. D is agreement with the custom mechanical equipment for the press box sign. And E is agreement with travels and tours for the Pro High Corral tour. They're going on for, that's for the hotel. And then, F is agreement with the travels and tours for the Pro High corrals going to trip. That's for the transportation cost. So, I'd like a motion to approve the contracts.
And we talked about all these in the Finance Committee in depth, so I'll make a motion to approve six-point-three in its entirety.
Thank you, Robin.
I'll second.
Second from Judy. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Newsom.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Truitt.
Aye.
Mrs. Zimmershi.
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid.
Aye.
Motion passed. Thank you all. It was exciting in the contract. Had a lot of them to discuss. Next item will be six-point-four, consider to take action on the proposed executive session for the following purposes to discuss and possible termination, reassignment, resignation, and employment of personnel in the attached detailed personnel report, to discuss confidential conversations with the board's attorney concerning pending claims and litigation, to discuss negotiations, and discuss the valuation of the superintendent of schools. And we do have, would like to have a motion for executive session.
I'm going to go on to executive session.
No. David's made a motion, I'll second.
Second.
Second from Robin. Roll call.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Truitt.
Aye.
Mrs. Zimmershi.
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid. Mr. Newsom.
Aye.
Motion passed. We're in executive session. Turned over session. Executive sessions, minutes were kept, minutes of the executive session was kept by the board's being a clerk and remain confidential. Six-point-seven, consider to take action to approve or not approve the recommendations for termination, reassignment, resignation, and employment of personnel. Like a motion to approve six-seven.
Aye. Motion.
Second.
Nancy, a motion, and second by David for six-point-seven. Any other discussion? If none, roll call.
Mrs. Truitt.
Aye.
Mrs. Zimmershi.
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid.
Aye.
Mr. Newsom.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Motion passed. Thank you. Next item will be six-point-eight, consider to take action on the revised, or the revisions of six-point-zero-one, leave for illness, item E, and extra duty site responsibilities, appendix D of the 2018-19 negotiated agreement. Like a motion to approve six-point-three.
I approve six-point-eight.
Second, or Robin.
David's motioned, and Robin seconded for six-point-eight. Roll call.
Mrs. Zimmershi.
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid.
Aye.
Mr. Newsom.
Aye.